I would like to call the City of Apache Junction Council Meeting of April 2nd, 2024, to order and ask everyone to put their cellphones on silent. The invocation will be led by Councilman Cross, the pledge by Councilman Heck.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day of life and all of your blessings. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of this city. Please help us to conduct the business of the city with good character and conviction. Help us to hear with understanding and compassion. Help us to serve and see the humanity and dignity of those that disagree with us and treat all persons with great respect. Please bestow your blessings on our first responders and our military personnel. Please keep them safe. We ask these things as your sons and daughters with great appreciation of your love and goodness. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mayor Wilson?
I am here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Present.
Councilmember Cross?
Here.
Councilmember Heck?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Nesser?
Present.
Councilmember Soller?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Consent agenda, as a reminder, all items on the consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to move an item for further discussion, the request must be made prior to approving the consent agenda and will be moved to new business. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the consent agenda to be accepted and approved as presented.
Roll call? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Proclamations, I have three proclamations here. National Library Week, whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others and learn new skills, pursue their passions no matter where they are on life's journey, and whereas librarians adapt through an ever-changing needs of their community, developing and expanding collections, programs, services that are diverse as the population they serve, and whereas librarians are accessible and inclusive places that promote sense of local connection, advancing, understanding, critical engagement, and share community goals, and whereas librarians play an pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support to job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth, whereas librarians, libraries, and the library workers are joined, the library supporters, and advance across the nation to celebrate the National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do proclaim National Library Week, April 7th through the 13th, 2024. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library and celebrate adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. Pam? Nope, there he is.
Get a close-up, Eli.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson and members of council. Pam Harrison, Library Director. This National Library Week, I thank you for your acknowledgement and support of the invaluable contributions our library makes to the Apache Junction community. Libraries play a vital role in fostering literacy, promoting lifelong learning, and bridging the digital divide. We are not merely repositories of books, but vibrant hubs of activity where individuals are encouraged to expand their horizons, pursue their passions, and fulfill their potential by doing such things such as downloading books, music, and films, taking an online class, learning a new skill in our maker space, accessing technology, attending an education program, or just connecting with one another. I want to take a moment to recognize our incredibly talented and dedicated library staff. Their passion for their work is evident in the quality of service they provide, and their efforts positively impact the lives of those we serve. And I invite you all to stop by and visit your beautiful library. We will be thrilled to show you all we have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Week of the Young Child. Whereas all Arizona's children deserve access to equality, early education, and care environments, and whereas quality childcare programs build children's lifelong learning skills during the critical years from birth to the age of five, funding qualified childcare is an important investment that improves family well-being, strengthens the community, and grows our state prosperity, and whereas the early care education teachers and childcare providers are essential force, workforce, that helps Arizona parents get to work or school. Public policies that support early care and education for Arizona's youngest learners help our families, communities, and economic thrive, or economy thrives, excuse me. Arizona Association of Education of Young Children, First Things First, and other community organizations in conjunction with the National Association for Education of Young Children are celebrating 53rd anniversary, the Week of the Young Child, and whereas organizations are working to improve equitable early childhood opportunities that provide a strong start for children in Apache Junction. Now therefore, I, Chip Wilson, by virtual authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim April 6th to the 12th, 2024, as the Week of the Young Child. You want to say?
I believe Katrina Devini was here this evening, and she has a guest with her.
Come on up and get a photo, Katrina.
Both of you come out.
Yeah.
Stand on one side, stand on the other. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson and council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all so much. My name is Katrina Devini. I'm the Panal Regional Director for First Things First, and I had the pleasure of, the time I've been working for First Things First, Bryant Powell was a former member of my council, and the woman I brought with me is the wonderful Brianna Frenzel, who is currently on our council. We are just really thrilled to be able to celebrate early learning in early childhood. It's something that Arizonans back in 2008 decided to invest in, and we actually, you just heard from one of our grantees that we fund, which is the Apache Junction Library. They have a parenting education program called the Fund Van that goes all around the county, helping to educate parents. So that's just one of the investments that is made in Panal County. We also do quality, try to raise the quality of childcare, and we have a family, friend, and neighbor program that provides support for home care providers, and I'll get to that in a minute. We do have a lack of childcare in Panal County. We also have hearing, vision, and dental, and developmental screenings, and just all of these programs are offered free because of the funding that we're able to provide. So we appreciate the partnership with all of you, and so that's all the good news. And then I just want to end with, we do have a crisis going on. If I can give this so you can pass it out. We do have a crisis going on in early childhood. Quality First can do what we can do. It's our signature program to try to raise the quality of care in childcare, but in Panal County, we found that it's not the investment in trying to raise the quality of childcare, it's that we don't have enough childcare. And when the council really dug down into the reasons why we don't have enough childcare, it's a workforce crisis. So I know we're all in a workforce crisis, but this is the workforce behind the workforce, and there are so many issues in trying to make childcare affordable, make the childcare workers be able to afford to live based on what childcare centers are able to pay them. I could go on and on with what the issues are, but we're bringing together elected officials such as yourselves, along with the business leaders such as Lucid, P&amp;G, these big organizations that are coming into Panal County to put their factories and their plants, and attracting people to Panal County with families when we don't have enough childcare to provide for their children. So we're bringing together business leaders and elected officials on April 23rd in Florence for a couple of hours to kind of talk about this and what we can do in Panal County to hopefully come up with some solutions for what we can do to help this situation. So I just wanted to personally come and invite you. There's a QR code on the bottom of that. If you can just scan it and let us know you're going to be there, that would be helpful as we try to put together the tables to have meaningful conversations during this forum. So I want to let you know there's a lot of good work going on, and we appreciate your support, but we still have some work to do. So we just welcome you all if you could come to the forum. It would be fantastic. And thank you all for your continued collaboration and support in early childhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Fair Housing Month. Whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968 and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide for fair housing in the United States within constitutional limits, and whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but is fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans, and whereas discriminatory housing practices undermine the strength and virtual of America and its people, and whereas April has traditionally been designated as Fair Housing Month in the United States, I now therefore, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim April as Fair Housing Month. Robert?
Big smile around. Bigger.
Okay. Regional intergovernment updates. Anyone over here have some updates? Over here. Okay, I've got one. Oh, yeah. Robert, you got anything?
Not tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, I've got one. Last Thursday, I attended the 19th Annual International State of the State Activities, and, well, it wasn't that picture. But I, it was very interesting in the aspect that, of what Arizona is working internationally, and seeing some of the things that they're working on, and some of the, I'll say, companies and other, other countries, other provinces, which are from out of Canada, are working directly with our state in, you know, doing some trades, as well as bringing in, I'll say, small businesses as well. It was very interesting hearing what all's going on. I also had the opportunity to talk to our governor for a few minutes, and I expressed to her a thank you for the veto of 2570, which was the bill that was going to do away with our local zoning rules, and she, in my letters that I presented to her, I said that one of the, I'll say, sad effects of this is going to be that it's going to do away with the large lot community in our community and in other cities, and I said in some of the side effects is going to be that the young adults that work with 4H and FFA would no longer be able to have any projects because of this being done away with. And she turned around and saw me, and she says, Mayor Wilson, your comments concerning 4H was fantastic. She says, no one even thought of that. Thank you. So that had told me that she actually read our letter, so that she understood what was going on. Okay, then I had an opportunity to go to a spring training game and be out there for all the East Valley mayors, and as you can see, they're all present and accounted for there, and we got the opportunity to watch a spring training game there in Mesa, and it was interesting. Okay?
Mayor?
Yes?
I forgot. This last week, we, both Councilman Soller and Councilman Heck and I, attended a seminar on homeless within Panal County, and the different, different ways of trying to come up with, you know, housing that's affordable and combating the issues of what we can do to address it, and there's a lot of unique ideas out there. They mainly are concentrating on trying to get landlords in a position to where they can take in lower-income individuals and sustain them, at the same time also bring these people in and help them get back on their feet and start a new career in life. So it was very interesting information, and I look forward to working with them more and coming up with solutions.
Okay, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, Bryant Powell, City Manager. Tonight, I'm thrilled to introduce to you and our community our new Finance Director, Angelie Holly. Would like to ask her to come up and do a brief introduction. Tonight, you all ratified our effort, and come on up. She comes to us with a ton of experience in a recent school district at Catalina Foothills, as well as Suntran, which is the Tucson area transportation system. So we'll turn it to Angelie and go from there.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. It is with great honor and enthusiasm that I introduce myself to you today. With over 25 years of experience in accounting, both in government and public sectors, I have a wealth of expertise in financial management, strategic planning, and team leadership. Throughout my career, I've had the privilege of serving in various roles, including Director Finance for Suntran, Sun Van, Sun Link in Tucson, where I played a pivotal role in preparing critical corporate reports, formulating policies, and ensuring the accuracy of financial statements. My tenure in this capacity has equipped me with invaluable insights into navigating complex audits and spearheading strategic initiatives for sustainable financial growth. Additionally, my experience as Director Finance for Catalina Foothills School District and my time at Pima County Treasurer's Office have further honed my skills in budget management, regulatory compliance, and operational efficiency. Educated at the University of Arizona with a degree in accounting, I'm deeply committed to excellence and fostering collaboration to achieve organizational objectives. I'm very excited about the opportunity to contribute to the betterment of our city's financial landscape and look forward to sharing insights that will benefit our growing community. Thank you for allowing me to introduce myself today, and thank you, Bryant, and I'm eager to collaborate with you in advancing our city's financial needs and interests.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome, and we won't hold it against you, the chair from U of A.
Do you have any questions?
Not now.
Not now.
Thank you.
Be back in budget. It's a honeymoon period.
Yeah. Thank you, Angelie, and I'll turn some time over to Eli for some updates on current events.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. Two events to highlight tonight, the first of which is the upcoming Earth Day, which I think is this Saturday. I did not realize how big of a deal this was, but apparently this is about 2,000 or 3,000 people come out to this, and great family event. I think they release 1,000 ladybugs. The next picture, which you'll see, really shows a little bit of the scale. We have multiple vendors and city booths up, so it's a great chance for families, friends get together and celebrate the earth. And then the second one to highlight tonight, really big deal for Apache Junction as we, the Public Art Commission keeps moving forward. There is a application on our website now, Statement of Qualifications for Vinyl Art, that will be open for another week. So we really need, I don't know how many applications or statement of qualifications have been submitted, but we really want help from you all in the community, getting our local artists involved, and getting a chance for their art to be on display in multiple locations. And again, the closing date for that is April 8th. And then lastly, just a reminder that we send out a newsletter every Thursday, so if you haven't signed up for that, please go on our website and sign up for the weekly updates.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Public hearings, 13 and 14 are related in the same subject. After hearing Sneff's presentation, I will combine the public hearings, but we'll have a motion for each.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Kelsey Shatnick. I'm a Planner on Staff, and tonight is the public hearing for the proposed fence and wall text amendment. As a reminder, we held a work session on March 18th. At that time, staff provided a complete overview of proposed text edits to the fence and wall regulations, and since then, the text has been edited based on questions asked during that work session to provide additional clarification. And this is a public hearing, so I will run through my entire presentation that I gave on the 18th, as well as address some of the changes that have been made since that date. So here's a general overview of all of the proposed changes to the code. The first includes reorganization of chapter language. We are adding language regarding general requirements and maintenance for all zoning districts, language regarding prohibited fence and wall materials, expanding the permitted fence materials in single-family residential zoning districts, adding language specific to rural properties, and adding language clarifying requirements for non-residential, multifamily, and new single-family developments. And before I go into the detail of those proposed changes, I wanted to provide some insight into the intent behind those proposed changes. So the proposed changes, the intent is to provide better clarification of fence and wall requirements in all zoning districts, provide more flexibility with allowed materials, and improve the safety and aesthetics of fences and walls moving forward. So first, we have the reorganization of chapter language. of chapter language. It's organized into five sections, including general requirements and maintenance in all zoning districts, prohibited fencing in all zoning districts, single-family residential zoning districts, non-residential, multifamily, and new single-family developments, and non-conforming fences. Next, we have general requirements and maintenance in all zoning districts. So to the section, we've added language regarding fences and wall placements in relationship to easements, language regarding retaining walls, language regarding construction of fences and walls with consistent materials, and language indicating that fences and walls should be well-designed and kept in reasonable condition. And since March 18th, two minor changes have been made to this section, so I kind of wanted to highlight those. So the first is we've added examples of unpermitted or undesirable fencing types. So we've included a couple pictures for a visual example, and then we've also included this language. So we've included, this includes but is not limited to fences or walls that are leaning, missing slats or blocks, rotting, contain mismatched materials, or are damaged. And then the next change that was made was to the buildings used as fences and walls. And we have removed the portion of the text that says, "and is painted to match the primary color of the main structure." So all of the other regulations are remaining, that it will have to complement the main structure, but we are not going to require the fence or wall be painted identically to match that main structure. And so kind of with that, I want to emphasize that, again, this is one of the most important sections of the code because overall maintenance plays an important role on whether that fence is allowed. And over the next few slides, I will show pictures that highlight the importance of this section. So here are two examples of a wood fence. The fence on the left, you have fence slats that are broken, falling apart, most likely rotting. And then a fence on the right is also constructed of wood, but is being well-maintained and is well-constructed. Next is an example of a decorative fence or wall with multiple materials. So this kind of highlights the difference between mismatched materials and multiple materials. So on the left, you can see mismatched materials where the design of the fence is not intentional. It's just kind of different fence materials put up all at once to create a barrier. And then on the right, you have a wall created of multiple materials, including stucco, wrought iron, wood, in an intentional design. And then next is an example of a corrugated metal fence. Again, you have, on the left, the fence is falling apart and creating a safety hazard, whereas the fence on the right is well-constructed and maintained. Moving on to prohibited materials, we've added two to this section. We've included fabrics and tarps, including mesh canvas, tarpaulin, or similar non-rigid materials. And then we have razor, concertina, and barbed wire. And then we've changed existing language, so we've changed unapproved corrugated metal panels to unframed, naturally occurring reflective galvanized sheet or corrugated metal panels. And again, I will show some examples throughout the next few slides of each of these items, and I'll also be providing examples of allowed alternative to these prohibited items.
Your Honor, Your Honor, question. I thought, I thought barbed wire was allowed, not the razor wire, but barbed wire.
So barbed wire is allowed in residential zoning districts for the keeping of animals.
Okay.
So it is allowed in a certain context, but generally it is not. So here is an example of mesh canvas. Here's an example of tarpaulin. And then here is an allowed alternative to those items. So privacy fence slats can be added to any existing chain link fencing to add additional privacy to a property. So next, we have concertina, razor, or barbed wire. And an allowed alternative to that would be an anti-climb fence or wall spikes. And then finally, we have untreated, unframed corrugated metal fence panels. And the allowed alternative would be framed and treated or painted corrugated metal fence panels. And I will go through and kind of touch on this in the next section. However, before we moved on, I did want to note a few additional changes that have been made. So in terms of electric fences, so we have not changed the zoning districts that they are allowed in, so that remains the same. However, we have added language to clarify where on the property these can be placed. So we have added language that they can be attached to existing fencing and must be located on the inside of any existing fencing. And then staff also had concerns with safety of these types of fencing. So we have proposed that either the fence meet a 10-foot setback, or that they are clearly marked with safety and warning signage every 60 feet if they are going to be on the property line. So I didn't include the 60 feet originally in what was provided in the staff report, however, this is our recommendation.
Chelsea.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to see the signage changed from 60 feet to every 16 feet.
Every 16 feet.
On public rightaways, along public rightaways.
Okay. And we can absolutely make that change?
I think because of the, you know, it is an electric fence. And the other thing I would like to see is language put in there that states that it must be a commercially manufactured electric charger versus somebody plugging their fence into a 110 outlet. In other words, rigging it to do something nefarious versus keeping livestock in place.
Thank you, Councilmember Cross. And we can absolutely do that. I just recommend, and that will need to be included in the motion. So if it is recommended for approval, just to make sure to include those changes.
I'll start writing.
Kelsey's making that, Alicia.
You got it, girl.
All right. And then the next proposed change, so we just discussed electric fences, now we have barbed wire. So again, this is only allowed for the keeping of large livestock on certain residential properties. So to this section, we have added the word equine to be very clear that horses are included in this livestock category. And then the code read that it must be secured to posts or supporting structures not more than eight feet from each other. However, we've increased that from eight to 10 to allow a little bit more flexibility with fence design. Next, we have permitted fencing materials for single-family residential zoning districts. We are allowing framed and painted or treated galvanized sheet or corrugated metal fence panels, excluding carload container walls, allowing mesh screening as a secondary material type for the screening of sports courts, and allowing chicken wire, wire fabric, and similar welded or woven wire fabrics as a secondary material type for the keeping of animals. So here is an example, again, of that framed and treated corrugated metal fencing. So we have changed the language a little bit within this section, and I've noted it at the bottom of this slide. So you can see that we have added the word patina to be very clear that we are allowing that creation of that rusted look. And then we've also added, in a way to eliminate the naturally occurring reflective surface, we had some kind of, we had a couple questions on, you know, if just painting white or something were allowed. So we just are better clarifying that it's that natural reflectiveness we are trying to reduce. Next, we have mesh as a secondary material for sports courts. Again, to this section, we have changed the language a little bit to add clarification on what this means. So we've added, as an example, volleyball, basketball, pickleball, or tennis court. And again, this is specifically to single-family residential zoning districts, which is where this code exists.
Your Honor, Kelsey, is that material allowed in any kind of a commercial setting?
So in a commerc-, so how it is written, it is not allowed in a commercial setting as a primary fence material. However, we would, throughout the zoning review process, we would look at whether or not the mesh material would make sense in that context. So generally, it would not be allowed, but we understand that there are specific purposes for the allowance of that fence. And so typically, when you have a commercial property, you know, staff reviews the project and looks at the fencing, and we discuss all of that, and we would work that out at that time.
So there is, you know, I could see us needing or wanting at some point in time to use this type of material maybe over at the rodeo grounds for, you know, instead of putting the slats on the fencing. The other thing is, is there are, there is a business in town that has, it's a commercial business with that type of screening material. And it's approved for that location specifically. I would assume that if the material goes bad, he doesn't have to replace the whole fence. He just needs to maintain the material and put up new material as it, as needed, correct?
If it is an approved material at that location, then yes, it would just need to be updated.
Thank you.
And then finally, we have chicken wire, wire fabric, and other similar materials as a secondary material type. And to this section, we have added a no-climb fence, simply for clarification. So no-climb fence is already allowed per the code. However, we understand that listing wire, fabric, and similar materials might confuse some individuals. So we just really wanted to make that clear, that no-climb fencing is permitted. Next, we have rural properties. So these include properties zoned RSGR, RS54, and RS54M. So we've added details regarding the use of corral and pen fences. And then we are also allowing acatio or wooden stick fences. So here is an example of a corral and pen fence. So again, this type of fencing is already permitted per our code. We just added language in there to better clarify what this type of fence is and looks like.
Chelsea, go back one slide back, please. So right here on the left, we have a chain link fencing material.
Mm-hmm.
Yet, in our original code, under corral fence, corral slash pen fences, which is on page 10, we, the wording in there kind of has it written right now where it's omitting or not allowing chain link fence material to be used for corral fencing and pens. I think that, that verbiage needs to be changed under subsection 1. So it's section 3B, section 1. And then section 2 is the height of the fencing. For like round pens in a horse setting, a lot of times on, you'll have a round pen somewhere within the property that's used for training horses. And ideally, you want something that's, if you're dealing with stallions, you want something to be seven to eight feet and solid so that the horse can't be seeing, can't see out and get himself in trouble and the trainer in trouble. For instance, if a mare was walking by, you know, a stallion can get out of control really quick. So we have a high restriction.
Your Honor.
I think that needs to be addressed.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I apologize, Daryl. Daryl, would you, would you get a little closer to that microphone? I was interested in what you had to say, but I didn't really catch a lot of it. You were kind of fading away.
Sorry about that.
No, you're good.
So I'm pointing out on page 10, section 3, for rural properties zoned RSGR, et cetera, it's section 3B, subsettings 1 and 2. On 1, it says, "Corral pen fences shall be constructed of wood, masonry, ride iron, pipe, rail, or similar materials, but shall not be solid construction or made of metal wire such as chain link or barbed wire. Mesh stall panel screens shall be allowed as a secondary material type." Well, as you can see right here, we're saying in the picture that chain link is acceptable, but in our, and I apologize for not catching this two weeks ago when we had this meeting, but right there.
I missed it too.
I would like to see that verbiage changed to where, you know, obviously, chain link fencing is acceptable and solid material for not an outside perimeter fence, but an interior corral and/or round pen could be made of solid material and be up to eight feet tall.
All right. So just to confirm, Councilmember Cross, so in terms of the metal wire, chain link, or barbed wire, for a perimeter fence, would you, are you looking at it as this example as a secondary material or a primary material?
That's a primary material. There's no reason why it can't be a primary material.
Okay. And then?
And same with barbed wire. We have barbed wire as primary material just up the road here on Superstition where they've got cattle currently in a, in a corral.
And we can absolutely make that change to make that a little more clear. I think, so when we, when we wrote this, looking at this picture, the metal act, this section of the fence is what we wrote the code to. So we can absolutely make those changes to make it clear that a corral pen fence could be made out of that as a primary material.
Sure.
And then one other clarification, for exceeding the six feet in height, again, are you looking at that as a perimeter or an interior fence?
Interior fence, somewhere within the property, not out at the road. Generally speaking, like a, you know, a pen that would hold more of a dangerous type horse because he's, he's a stallion. So, you know, there's some stallions out there that are baby dials, but there's a lot of them that, you know, they can be a handful.
Thank you.
And some mayors can be a handful as well.
Do that.
Are you able to keep track of this? Because we're gonna, these are a few items that we could either have to put specifically in the motion.
Yeah, I'm going to start writing that.
Okay.
Well, and if you don't, Sidney.
Oops. You know what I'm gonna say. No, he does know what I'm gonna say. If we don't have the exact language, I suggest we get the exact language and come back to a date certain so that we have the language. That might be better because we don't want to make a change and then maybe later you say, well, no, I didn't say that and that's not what I meant. That's why we should have the exact language. These four amendments get a little odd, especially on the last date that they're of a public hearing. So I would really suggest that we get the language.
If we get the language at a later date, would we still have to have another public hearing?
You just continue it to a, another date, yes. And you can do that. You don't have to notice it again, notice it again in the paper though.
Okay.
I'd rather see it incorporated into the final version for us.
Sorry. Yes.
Did I, Bill, I'm assuming that was you just talking just now. Did I understand that right? You're saying that there's, if there's a, a lot of amendments to the motion, that we can continue this and take it, to get it penned in there correctly?
Not necessarily, oops, sorry. Not necessarily a lot, but we need the exact language because it is so specific as to Mr., or for Councilmember Cross's concerns, and I believe the mayor's also.
Okay, so so far, we've got, we've got two, right?
Four.
Four different?
Four changes.
I would, I would be on the fence of a.
Ooh, bad.
Of continuance. I mean, let's go through this thing and if we start, if it starts getting a little, a little thick, then yeah, we should probably just send it back to the drawing board kind of thing.
I think it just, just set for final review and, and final statements on it and the aspect on it, not necessarily a complete redo and just the changes to make sure the wording is correct and we fully understand everybody.
Well, just from this point forward, I do not have any others.
Yeah, to me, I think these are manageable, but that's just me. I don't know. Sidney's got an idea.
Mayor, members of council, Sidney Rice, Planning Manager. If we could accurately capture the concerns that Councilmember Cross and Mayor Wilson had in the motion, we could incorporate that into the code. And so there would be no additional need for an additional meeting unless there's additional concerns that come up throughout Kelsey's remainder of the presentation. So just something to note, just something to note for meeting efficiency. That's it. Thank you.
Your Honor, as we're going through this, then are you making notation so that as maybe you could come back up and tell us what words you're going to insert or do so that we could actually hear those words to find out if they match what Daryl and, and our mayor have brought up?
Councilmember Johnson, that's exactly correct.
Okay.
And if there was any doubt in terms of the intention of the code, then we would set up a one-on-one with the council member.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity here, is this something that, that could be changed and then emailed to us to verify and then just put on consent?
No, sorry, Ms. Vice Mayor, no, because every ordinance must have a public hearing. Can't do it on consent.
Okay.
That's a good question. We could also recess for 10 minutes, work out the language, get back on the record. We did- Can't do it on consent.
Okay.
That's a good question. We could also recess for 10 minutes. We're got the language. Get back on the record. We did that way also.
That works. Okay, you want to do that?
Yeah, we can absolutely do that, Mayor.
Okay, are you finished with your, you finished? You want to finish your?
I would say go through all the rest of it.
Let's finish Kelsey's presentation.
And then we take about 10 minutes.
I'm about halfway through.
Yeah, for sure. Kelsey, finish it up.
All right. And here is an akatyo, an example of an akatyo or wooden stick fence. Finally, we have non-residential, multifamily, and new single-family developments. So again, new single, new single-family developments, think large-scale, platted subdivision, not individual lots. So these are large projects. To this section, we've added general design guidelines. Chain link fencing only permitted during active construction or a security fencing on an undeveloped property. And then we have relocated the patio enclosure and screening information from the landscape code to fences and walls. However, no changes were made to these requirements. So I did want to note a proposed change to this section, specifically chain link fencing. So we have now identified clearly temporary versus permanent chain link fencing. So temporary chain link fencing, basically, think of standalone panels supported by a weighted base. And we are going to allow this on a property for, on a vacant property for six months unless accompanied by an active building permit. If no building permit is obtained or there's no plan for the vacant property, then we will require a more permanent installation of a fence, which is a post-driven chain link fence. So this will provide a little bit more security. It will prevent it from being blown over in the wind to create a little bit better curb appeal. And again, to, to bring it back, the intent of the proposed changes, staff believes that these provide better clarification of fence and wall requirements in all zoning districts, provide more flexibility with allowed materials, and improve the safety and aesthetics of fences and walls moving forward. So we are recommending approval on this item. I understand that we will recess and hopefully work out those final few edits to the code. But we are optimistic that we can answer all your questions and have a, have a good code for you to review and approve.
How much time are you going to need?
Your Honor, wait, can we, Joel, can we go on and go on to any of the other presentations and then just come back to this?
You can, you can, but you may want to get this one.
Okay.
Would you like a motion to recess for?
Yeah. I'll make the motion. How long she needs?
15 minutes?
15 minutes.
15, 20 minutes, I think would be.
Second.
Yeah, I made a motion to, to take a break for 15 minutes. Come back.
Moved in second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Okay. All right, you're in recess for the next 15 minutes.
Break for 15 minutes.
I'm back.
Mayor, can you check and make sure Robert's still here?
Robert, you still there?
Yeah, I'm here, Chip.
Okay, good, thank you. A little longer than fifteen minutes.
That's all right.
Nope, there she is, okay. I'd like to call together the Apache Junction City Council meeting back to order. Kelsey.
All right, Mayor, fellow council members. So I have before you the proposed language based on the changes. So what you will see highlighted in pink is what I have just changed. So I'll read it aloud for everyone. Fences shall not be erected or maintained within ten feet of emly public right-of-way or public right-of-way, public easements or reservation for roadway purposes, or they must be clearly marked with safety warning signage every sixteen feet along public right-aways. Again, this is referring to electric fences. And then I have added, electrically charged fences shall be constructed of commercially manufactured materials specifically designed for the keeping of livestock.
Got it?
I think that's right. That works.
Okay.
Thank you. And here is the language regarding corral and pen fences. So corral and pen fences may be constructed of wood, masonry, wrought iron, pipe rail, chain link, no-climb type fences, barbed wire, smooth wire, and similar materials. Mesh stall panel screens shall be allowed as a secondary material type. Corral and pen fences shall not exceed six feet in height if installed as a perimeter fence. And corral and pen fences used for training purposes, like round pens, can be up to eight feet and must be located on the interior of a property.
Do you want to add that it must be, must meet setbacks? Or is that just understood?
That's what it says.
I am happy to add that, Councilmember Nesser, but it is also, it would still need to meet setbacks.
Called from across, said good with you, because you're the horse people.
Yep. Yeah, it's definitely, the wording's perfect.
Glad you caught that, because I don't know these things.
And I missed it, too.
Thank you.
We got a public hearing.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on these subjects?
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. I was just wondering, is this sort of like other zoning stuff where your neighbor has to report you, or you're going to drive around checking on people? That's one question. The other question is, is what about the low-income people that's in the area? Who's going to pay for their fencing if they can't, or are they just going to get fined?
Anyone from, want to discuss that?
Well, isn't existing fencing grandfathered in, correct?
Yep. Well, talking about any of them.
We need to close the public hearing first, if we wanted to.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay. I will close the public hearing. Does anyone want to say any comments concerning?
Thank you, Mayor. So in terms of any existing fencing out there, if it was already permitted for the code, then it is allowed to remain. So it's, you know, if some, any of the changes that we have made with this code has now made something unpermitted, it is allowed to remain. And residents will not be forced to remove it until such time that it is in utter disrepair. At that point, then, if they were to construct a new fence or remove the existing fence, then they would need to meet current code.
Okay. All right.
Your Honor. The other issue that was brought up regarding compliance, it's still going to be enforced through normal code compliance?
Yes.
That is correct.
Ways. Thank you.
Okay. Now that the public hearing's called, I'll ask for a motion. Individual motions for both, for each.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that Resolution Number 24-03, a resolution of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled 2024 Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume Two, Land Development Code, Chapter One, Zoning Ordinance, Article One-Dash-Six, Supplemental Regulations, One-Dash-Six-Dash-Three, Fences and Walls, and Article One-Dash-Eight Landscape Regulations be approved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now do I have motion for the second ordinance, 1545?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1545 be read by title only and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 1545, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume Two, Land Development Code, Chapter One, zoning ordinance by repealing and replacing portions of Article One-Dash-Six, supplemental regulations, and Article One-Dash-Eight Landscape Regulations, and by adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2024 Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume Two, Land Development Code, Chapter One, zoning ordinance, Article One-Dash-Six Supplemental Regulations, subsection one, dash six, dash three, fences and walls, and Article One-Dash-Eight Landscape Regulations, subsection one, dash eight, dash six, landscape standards, repealing any conflicting provision providing for severability and providing for penalties.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1545 is read by the city clerk. Be approved.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay, presentation, discussion, public hearing, consideration of ordinance Number 1544, approving a text amendment to Apache Junction City Code. Kelsey.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So to clarify, this is related to our fence code, regulations that we just changed. Essentially, there is a definition that is located within the Chapter Nine, Volume One, Chapter Nine, Health and Sanitation. So we are simply amending that definition of fence-prohibited materials to identically match the revised changes within the fence and wall regulations we just changed. So that's all this is doing. It's just making sure that all of our information across our code matches.
Okay. Any councilmember have questions or anything?
Yep.
Robert, any questions? Guess not.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing nobody moving, I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion on ordinance 1544.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance Number 1544 be read by title only and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 1544, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Nine, Health and Sanitation, by repealing and replacing portions of the article nine dash one, Property Maintenance Standards, subsection nine dash one dash two, definitions, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance 1544 is read by the city clerk. Be approved and adopted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, discussion and consideration of approval of creation of the classification of Marketing and Communications Director. Anna.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Anna McCray, Human Resources Director. I'm here this evening for a discussion and consideration of approval for the classification of a newly created position, the Marketing and Communications Director. This position would join and oversee three other positions in the Management Services Division of Marketing and Communications, and the Marketing and Communication Director would report directly to the city manager. Currently, our city personnel rules authorize the city manager to classify positions in a salary grade of forty-one or lower. This position is proposed for classification at a grade forty-two, which is the same level as all other department directors at this time. Due to the rapid growth, this division has seen growth from two positions to four. This would be the fourth position within the last year. We have big initiatives ahead, and this position would be responsible for the oversight of the city's overall communication plan in executing those strategies to continue to enhance the connectivity with the community. I know that city management is requesting this position, and so I'll kick it over to Bryant for a few comments.
Thank you, Anna. And, Your Honor, just wanted to add, over the last couple of retreats, the councils have given me direction, instruction, we need to elevate our ability to communicate and strategically identify how we communicate now with our public. We do not have pagers anymore. We do not interact with a local, weekly, we used to, and it's only been ten years, where we had weekly newspapers on all of our front doors. And the ability for us to continue to carry on the great tradition of the service, we need to be able to tell our story and continue to do that. And so, from my perspective, we are taking this as a reflection of your goals, your desires, to keep that elevation of communication strong on what we are able to do. There is no other way. A digital communication effort and a way to coordinate in our division within this Management Services Department is where I'm recommending we go.
Okay, any? Yes.
I have a question. So is this a, is this an added position? Or is it a, it's, you're not eliminating one, but just giving, adding, adding more responsibility for that position? It's an added position?
Councilmember Heck, that is correct. It's added net new position to the Marketing and Communications Division of the Management Services Department. This position has received a great amount of responses to the recruitment. We have about seventy-eight applicants, and so that is in process. It is anticipated after the hire of this position that they will then recruit for the vacant Public Information Officer position.
It's going to take us some time to do all four. We have two people there now, but yes, eventually we will have four.
Could this, this work within our budget, our wage and salary budget?
It does. From our standpoint, in terms of revenue to expenditures, we can manage that.
Your Honor?
Yes.
If we want to grow our city, and we want to get businesses and people to come here and enjoy Apache Junction and move here with their families, this is a must. Communication is everything in this day and age, so we need somebody that really knows what they're doing. So I'm for this.
Your Honor? This, Brian, this was part of the retreat where we were talking about expanding this out so that we could really start building on an identity and how we are viewed by the public. Is that not correct?
That is correct. So for to me, these are those messages.
Signature city for ourselves.
This is a, this is a definite reaction to some of those goals that have been articulated to our staff and to me.
Okay.
To get done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We love when you listen.
Well, that's the idea. That's how the council manager's supposed to work. We've got a ways to go, but this, this is a big start to that.
Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion?
Let me go on up.
Your Honor? I move that the placement on the salary schedule of the newly created Classification of Marketing and Communications Director pursuant to the 2023 City of Apache Junction Personnel Rules, Rule Six, Classification, Section Four, Creation, Abolishment and Recreation of Position, City Council Approval, agree to the grade forty-two for the civilian salary schedule for the Marketing and Commission Director position be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Director Direction to Staff, Presentation, Discussion, and Direction to Staff Regarding Proposed Changes to the Apache Junction Public Safety Animal Control Fee Schedule. Chief Pulli.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Pleasure to be here. Tonight, we're just going to discuss about Apache Junction City Code, Article four-three to four-seven, which is Public Records Request and Public Safety Fee Schedule. As we continue to grow as a city, one of the things that we've noticed with our public records requests, we get inundated, our record staff does. When we look at what we're doing and how much time we're spending, we wanted to make sure we were in par with other cities, as well as state agencies that are also charging for public records requests. So when we looked at that, we looked at, we were very below, we were very low compared to other cities and other counties and towns. So I'm going to go through these real quick. What we're looking at is, and for discussion is, when we, when people come and ask for police reports, copies of reports, we're looking at what we currently charge and what other agencies charge. We are way behind market value. We're looking at changing that fee schedule to five dollars for the first twenty pages of a police report. For any certified copies, it's ten dollars. When we look at photos, it's just a strict ten dollars is what we're looking at. We currently have ours where you have Polaroids, different-sized photos. Obviously, with technology, that's completely different now. Also, when you talk about audio, in the past, we used cassettes as well as VHS. Some of our staff don't even know what a VHS is. So we're, we're trying to get with the times and looking at our fee schedules with audio. One of the big things is, on the next page is our body-worn cameras. That's a game changer for public records requests. When we look at those, it takes, on average, for every hour of body-worn camera footage, it takes about five hours of redaction time. Our record staff has to go through and listen, watch every piece of body camera footage and make sure we're doing appropriate redactions. And what we're looking at there is... And what we're looking at there is, for forty-six dollars per hour, that it's reviewed. So, that's in par with everything that other cities are doing as well. And Apache Junction would not be any different than surrounding agencies, county as well as state agencies as well. Then, when we look at the next page, which is our animal control, when we looked at those, we looked at how much our animal control is being used. And unfortunately, we're seeing an increase in dogs and cats that are being dropped off to our facility. Some of those dogs and cats don't even come from Apache Junction, but people know that we have an animal control, and they're dropping these animals off. So when we look at the fee schedule, we're looking at changing that from a ten dollar surrender fee to now a hundred and ten, and for dogs and seventy-five dollars for cats. Last year, we took in about eight hundred and forty cats, dogs, no, sorry, cats, and over a thousand dogs that were dropped off. And some of these were people that are, that say they found the dog, and a lot of times that we, we have to put them on a waiting list because we just don't have room in the shelter. So, we are looking at our fees, and we're looking for direction from the city council to see if, what we're requesting and, and looking at is being in line with other agencies, animal controls that are also taking in dogs and cats. We're very low for ten dollars for somebody to drop off a dog and cat. People are, are using our facility. Councilman Cross?
Your honor.
Yes.
On the adoption fees for dogs and cats, you're jumping from, you're proposing to jump from ninety to two hundred dollars. And I know it includes sterilization and probably vaccinations and everything else. If there's any way we can get that fee to be a lot cheaper, or any, you know.
So.
The, the cheaper we can make it, even if we're having to fork a little money out of our pockets to, to make it work.
So the only.
Adoption fees should be cheap. That, that encourages people to go to the shelter to adopt a dog.
So, thank you. What we're, we are not looking to add, for the adoption fee, what we're looking to add or to change is the puppies. Puppies are going like crazy. It's where, what we don't want to change is the adoption fee for a regular dog. Anything over, I believe it's five months, would be ninety dollars still. That's what it currently is, is a ninety dollar adoption fee. It has been for some time. But what the other, the only increase would be for puppies.
Got you.
As well as kittens.
Is that okay? Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, we agree with the policy of trying to.
Yeah, because as you, as you know.
Correct.
It's hard to get rid of a, a full grown dog, but if it was practically free, we definitely would see more animals moved.
And our adoption fee is quite cheaper than anywhere else, even for a full grown dog. It's, when you compare it, I don't, I don't have those numbers right offhand, but we are significantly cheaper than Maricopa County, Pinau County, other agencies that are doing adoptions.
Mayor.
Three months? Okay, so a puppy is three months. The other thing, oh, did you have a question?
No, I was just gonna say, we don't want to make the fee too low because there are people out there that will get animals for not good reasons. Fighting and stuff like that. So, we gotta make sure we charge something so these people actually want the dog and aren't gonna take the dog and abuse the dog somehow. Because that does happen.
Agreed.
I have a question.
Yes.
The surrender fee, I don't see it anyplace else as if it went from one rate to the other. Was there a surrender fee before?
There was a surrender fee for sixty, I believe it was sixty-five dollars. No, it was ten dollars for, per animal.
My only concern there is, if there is a surrender fee that's high, are they going to pay the surrender fee, or are they gonna drive by and drop the dog?
We already are having people do that right now.
So, I'm, I'm just wondering, I mean, if you, if you're having them do that now, what makes you think that they're not going to drop more of them if we raise the rate to surrender?
Well, what's happening is, people are coming to Apache Junction because ours is so cheap to drop off a dog. When they live in Mesa, they live outside of our city and living in Tempe, Mesa, Chandler, Scottsdale. Because they don't, they want to pay a cheaper fee, and they're driving to our location to surrender that dog. Whereas if we were to have the same fee that other agencies have for a surrender fee, then maybe they would go to the jurisdiction that they would have, that they belong to.
What about the aspect of, you know, when they dropping them off, that they have to, in a sense, you know, have some type of identification as to where they're from in the aspect, and then having.
We.
Fees for, you know, I would say Apache Junction residents, and then for non Apache Junction residents would be an increased fee.
We do do that, but what's happening is, people will say, I found this dog in the Fry's parking lot. Or we found this dog walking across the street, and, and it, it was found, found, quote unquote, in Apache Junction, and we take that dog in.
Is there, is there any kind of fine for, oh, driving out and just opening a car door and dumping a dog out on the road? Is there a penalty or fine in this city for that?
There could be.
I kinda wonder about that because that's what I'm afraid they're gonna do. Is there doing that?
But the unfortunate thing is, that's what's going on right now in the aspect on it. We, we know that myself, because our, was it, three of our dogs adopted us. Not, because I mean, someone has dropped them off and they came to our property and, like I always said, that once the animal's on our property, it's condemned for life to stay on our property. But that has happened several times, and, you know, what I'm fearful of is that it would start expanding. So it's gonna happen more often.
Mayor, I got one more question. Do we have a way to, somebody that is really like, they're down and out, they've lost their home, they can't afford their dog anymore, they're not gonna be able to afford a fee. Is there a way that we can, that they can try to figure that out, maybe take the dog without hitting them with a big fee? It's gonna be tricky, I know, but we do have some people that are losing everything because the economy's bad. They have to move out, maybe they gotta move into an apartment or whatever from a house. They have a dog, they don't want the dog to get hurt, they want a good place for the dog. They bring it in. Do we do any of that stuff?
I can tell you, our animal control employees are very generous, and they do everything they can to support people that are in those situations. And we only have, we have very limited space. We are at capacity every single day. When people bring in a dog, they usually are, or a, or a cat, they are usually on a waiting list for, could be up to a couple of weeks before we can make room for it. So, one of the things that we do is, when somebody comes in, we do try to work with them, try to help them as much as possible, to include if we need to, then we would take the dog or cat. The other one that we're looking at is the euthanasia. That's a one that we've had several people come in and we do it, our staff does the euthanasia. The drug prices that we use have gone up, and we have, last year, we had to put down, we had a hundred and seventy-four owners of dogs come in asking for us to euthanize their dog, whether it's old, sick, whatever it may be. And we had a hundred and fifty-two dogs that we had to euthanize, whether because of, it bit somebody, it was in quarantine, nobody picked it up. And so, we had a hundred and fifty-two, there was a hundred and seventy-four. For cats, there was altogether over two hundred cats that were euthanized as well last year. So, as we said, the drug prices are going up. We're trying to not just be a, a place where we have to put cats and dogs down, and we're trying to stay in par with other animal control facilities.
Your honor.
Yes.
Chief, I can tell you, having had to euthanize a dog in the past at a regular commercial, in a regular veterinary clinic, a hundred and ten dollars is a great deal. I've, I've paid three hundred to four hundred dollars for an animal to be euthanized. So, a hundred and ten dollars for a dog is, it's a good deal. I mean, that's, you're very, very fair with that, so. And also, one other thing too, I, as far as helping folks that were kinda down on their luck, my understanding was there used to be a, a fund that they had that, that local residents could contribute to that, and then that money could be used to help folks in need if they, you know, if they, you know, couldn't afford something, and I know they have food, that food pantry there. There's a lot of things that, I think, like you said, the staff does a lot to try and help folks that are in need or that, you know, that having a hard time making ends meet.
Yes, we do have the food pantry where we do allow people to come down and get dog food, cat food as well. And that's, all comes from donations from the community.
Mr. Mayor. Just to let you know, tonight, staff is seeking direction to bring back a proposal for an ordinance. You saw a initial draft that you've all looked through. But we need direction to start the official process and also begin the state required sixty-day notification period for any increase or changes in fees. So the direction staff tonight, we would bring forward when an ordinance and resolution is ready, at a future date, to let you see the full language or any, any modifications that we got some feedback tonight, and also start that sixty-day notification period for, for the fees. So, you, you'll get another opportunity to see this at a work session as well.
Okay, I was gonna ask the question, because I saw it on my paper, it says, do I have a motion? And I thought this was direction to staff.
Your honor. I move that direction be given to staff.
No, we don't need, we don't need.
We do need direction.
Yeah, you do. We do need it.
Mr. Pooley, are you done? You, you were presenting, and we kinda stepped on you.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate it. I think for us, we are looking for direction, and you heard a few of our recommendations, but we're looking for the direction from council and mayor.
Your honor, I move that direction be given to staff to begin the process of updating the animal control fee schedule and bring a proposed ordinance to a future city council meeting be approved.
Second.
Second.
She said, she got the motion for animal control. What about the public safety?
I think the motion includes, public safety is the section four dash seven. And that includes public safety as well as animal control.
Okay. Well, as long as we're covering both of them.
The fee, yeah, the fees have to be posted for sixty days. You have to do a notice of intent, and we're gonna help the chief do that, and then we'll bring back the ordinance after that. And then you can make it effective, whatever date you feel is, whatever the chief recommends.
Your, your honor, I understand exactly what you're saying. What Councilmember Johnson just read is that updating animal control fee schedule did not say anything in that motion to update the, the.
The public safety.
That could be amended, just by, you can make an amendment and then vote on it real quick and say, public safety.
Daryl just amended it.
Just amended, but you need, need to vote on that.
And, and it's in the title correctly of the item, but, but you're correct, the motion was, it was not inclusive of the proposed public safety fee schedule.
I'd like to amend my motion to include the article four dash three and for the animal control and also the public safety fee schedule, article four dash seven.
Second.
Moved in second and a second time, so, roll call.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right. Call to the public. I would like to remind everyone that a call to the public is a courtesy and not required by law. It is a time for the public to express requests, communication, comments, and suggestions. Requests to speak forms must have been completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Underneath the open meeting law, council cannot engage in a discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism, may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly or place the matter on future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute limit for each speaker. And I've got three of them here, so we'll start out with Catherine Meek.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Catherine Meek, thirteen twenty-seven South Bel Air Road. Although Easter Sunday did not seem like it, the summer's coming on pretty soon here, and the Superstition Mountain Museum is starting to wind down our seasonal activities. This Thursday at two o'clock, well, at one o'clock is the final staff mail run on Thursdays. Thursday afternoon at two is our final lecture of the entire season, and it's going to be featuring one of our local authors, Tommy Staley, has just finished writing a book, Washing Worms. It's about her childhood, and so she'll be presenting some information about her book. Then, this Friday night is our final evening event. From, I believe it's four-thirty to six-thirty, we'll have Kelly Bennett performing. We'll have some appetizers and beverages available, twenty-five dollars a person for tickets. And so, starting this weekend, Saturday and Sunday are the only time our trains will be running through Mother's Day. And finally, this is April, which is the Donate Life Month. I am here solely because of a liver transplant. A very kind gentleman checked that box on his driver's license and signed up to be an organ donor, and that enabled me to survive twenty eighteen. And so I'm here today, bugging you about all these fun activities. I'd like to remind you, if you're not already an organ donor, feel free to check that box, let your family and friends know, and you can do a little bit of good once you're done. I am a big fan of recycling, and I'm here because of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Donna Carr.
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. First, I'm gonna say that when I tried to get the mental health place on Acateo and the Trail stopped, I went to the clerk's office, I was told I had to fill out a form. I was told at that point that I did have ninety, thirty days from the date it was voted on. I had some questions. Like, in two weeks' period, I called twice, I stopped by twice. I emailed once, no response. Next city council meeting, I did talk to the person, I was reminded I had thirty days from the date it was voted on to get one thousand and something signatures, no events going on, two weeks left, and I felt I got screwed over on that. Laughintero is, is building another mental health place over on Delaware and Superstition. And I did talk to the CEO, and what he told me was that, he was told by the city was to purchase property over in that area. If he purchased it anywhere else, that they would not rezone it for him. Now, I dropped some names to him, asked him who he's talked to. He had a loss of memory and didn't remember who he spoke to at the city. The government has no right to destroy your property value. Now, if you, you're building one a thousand feet away from me and one twelve hundred feet on the other side, and I was told by someone from zoning and planning that it would not depreciate the property value. I went to a zoning meeting, I talked to the zoning commissions, and they said, yes, it will. And I said, I did talk to an attorney. The attorney said that the only other alternative I would have is to have a class action suit against the city. I did mention that to the zoning commission, and they said, it sounds like that's about the only alternative you have. Now, I went out knocking door to door, got four hundred and two signatures. I did mention to them that I think that these places belong either in a commercial or industrial area where it's not gonna depreciate people's property values. And I also believe that conditional use permits or, or not at all on these mental health places. And on top of that, you plan on putting the tram down here, and I did talk to people as I'm knocking door to door. And what they informed me was, is they've worked in areas that the tram has come down further, and that all it brings is crackheads. and that all it brings is crackheads, because that's all that rides the tram. I did ride the tram once with my older grandson and yes, that's all I saw on the tram. So I, I, I just, I, I'm tired of the fact that I think zoning needs to get their shit together. And I say that because I went to an event that these guys put on for toddlers' Olympics and guess what's right next door to this place? I mean, that's Flatiron Park, the dispensary. Anyway.
Thank you.
Here are the signatures.
Andre Meek.
Andre Meek, thirteen-twenty-seven South Bel Air here in AJ. Way to stir it up there, chief, with the animal control. You know, we all have a good point on that, you know, you increase fees for surrender, the animals end up out in the desert. Happens now without a fee. So, you know, but fees or no fees, it's more of an education thing, it's more of a, I don't know what it is, you know. But, you know, in all of that, you have all that feeling for the animals and everything, but, you know, you have to have that same feeling for the people that are out there, because they got thrown out and they're out in the desert or wherever they are, so keep that in mind. Another thing I wanna bring up, some good news, I saw that Arizona is the number-one state for build-to-rent homes. And pretty cool, hopefully, the ones that we are building are going to be priced, you know, reasonably and not just join the owner's market now that, you know, where rent is so high and, you know, the thing is, an apartment is, you know, your studio's eighteen-hundred, you know, what's a house gonna be? And so, you know, I'm just hoping that, I guess, more generous heads prevail on those owners of the rentals and they, you know, they take into consideration the people that can barely afford one. And one more thing, my recycled wife, she brought up the museum. This Thursday at one is our last Thursday run on the mill and then we'll be running Saturdays only at eleven-thirty through the end of April and y'all gotta come out there, because I run it, so it's my baby. So anyway, that's it.
Any comments from the council? Mayor?
Your Honor.
I'm an organ donor, I just wanted to let everybody know.
Yes, Robert?
I don't know where this tram talk came from, but not in my crystal ball.
Yeah, there's no plans for light rail for.
Light rail, no.
It.
Same difference.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. During the meeting, thank you.